Our first presentation is around wastewater, so Ms. Aaron's go ahead and take it away.
Let me just start, members of the council, Madam Chairman. We wanted to have this work session because we've obviously been doing lots of work on ARPA and on wastewater and some questions have arisen with respect to wastewater. So we wanted to bring this up and I want to preface the entire presentation tonight by saying that this is a work in progress. You know, in the last week or 10 days, I've had some conversations with the county commissioners that suggest to me that we might have to take a harder look at some of the sewer system on the west side and the upgrades that are necessary there. They've been talking with our staff at the city and the staff has always indicated to Pablo County that, you know, upgrading the sewer system is going to be your responsibility, but they've gotten a pretty large number now and so they've requested that we take a look at it and see if some of that ARPA money might not be used to help enlarge the sewer systems on the west side. And you know what kind of developments we expect to happen on the west side. So I, that's one of the things I really want to explore in some detail. I've asked Scott Hobson to put together a team to try to get some numbers there so that we can, you know, really take a good hard look at what, what we could reasonably expect over there once the subdivisions north of Highway 50 come online, once the county jail comes online, once Neighbor Works comes online. Jim Butcher's got a development over there he's going to do. Emery Chuckley's going to put that market rate housing complex in. So there's all those kinds of things. So we want to present this information, get your feedback, but I want, want to make sure you know, these are, these are works in progress as we move forward. And with that, we'll have.
I think I'm first.
Say what?
I think I'm, I go first.
Oh, you go first, okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, City Council and Mayor Gradisar. We're going to break this up as follows. We're going to answer some questions with respect to some finances and fund balance of the wastewater department that enterprise that it is. We're going to turn it over to Andra so she can go through the wastewater details and some projects that are already on the books and some outstanding and some priority that she's been in conversation with Planning and Public Works. And then we're going to turn it back over to me and the mayor. And we're going to wrap up with what we wanted to present to you at the work, the city council work retreat with respect to where we are in the balances of spending the 2021 tranche. And your direction on spending the 2022 tranche will look a lot like what the mayor has told you. And then also, we want to end with the priority list of recommendations on that lost revenue calculation that is to be spent on governmental services. So a nice combination of all the above and thank you for your time today. Julia Cordova is with us tonight and she has been serving as our ARPA coordinator. She's back over behind by the mayor. Our compliance side isn't here, but Julia takes all the incoming questions about what is city council going to do.
Catherine's up.
And Catherine and Anna are here too. So from our compliance side and our, my phone friend Anna, when I go through this financial side, I will turn it over to her as certain parts of the presentation. Those numbers are so specific that we thought it might be helpful just to print to you the slide deck for you, the slide deck. I can also send it electronically if you'd like to have it to refer to in another time. But we'll start out with the slide deck that says wastewater fund balance this evening. All right, the next slide, please. The mayor referred to a few weeks ago and councillor Winter immediately caught on. He was referring to what is called here the annual, the comprehensive annual financial report. And he was referring to page number 25, which is the enterprise wastewater cash balance and fund balance. And he referred to it by its acronym of CAFRA, which by this year, we're going to see something different and it will be ACFORD, the annual comprehensive financial report, when Anna releases it and the audit does in June of 2022. So right now, we have 2020 balances and 2021 activity. So let's see, in, in that, on page 25 of the 2020 book, it, we, we what Anna put together for us in, underneath the sewer user fee, you see here, let me put mine on so that I can, I can watch also. Under the sewer user fee, you see an unrestricted sewer fee fund balance of 44,957 dot da 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 da. That carries. I'm sorry, 45 million. And that carries into 2021. And next slide, please. And what Anna presented for you here then was the 2021 information, all asterisk with it's not yet complete with respect to closing the year. So these are our best numbers to date. In the wastewater enterprise, there were 2021 revenues generated of 29 million, 2021 expenses of the 17.5 million, leaving a net revenue for just the year of 2021 of 11 million. And we're going to keep doing some math down the way here. Last project budget rolled forward. So out of that unrestricted balance, Andra's going to talk to, or I can on the next page, there has already been 30,630 million point six dollars in projects that have been presented to city council that you have approved that over the years that are in process or to be in process or to be set aside for in the event of an emergency. So that 30.6 million was rolled forward from 2020 into 2021. The debt obligation, and Anna will stop, just jump in anytime, is an accounting requirement to restrict the, the fund balance for any debt that's to be paid because they are revenue bonds. This isn't cash outlay this year. This is a required accounting function. If you looked back on the budget, the 2022 budget that was presented, the cash outlay of debt service is more like 2.3 million. And Anna, can I pause a minute there and see if you have any additional information about why the necessity to subtract the full debt obligation?
Yeah, so when wastewater, they've issued several revenue bonds through the years in 2010, 2014, and I think the most recent one was in 2016. When we issued them bonds, part of them were issued as revenue bonds. And then revenue bonds say that that revenue is encumbered first to pay off that debt obligation. So this is the total amount of debt that the wastewater department owes that is encumbered by them revenue bonds. So we can't use that revenue for projects until we pay off the debt first. And that's why the whole amount is there versus in the budget, which is only what is due during the year of 2022.
Thank you, Anna. And again, the cash outlay on the, for the wastewater department in your 2022 budget is estimated to be this year, 2.3 million. The next subtraction is the it's not, it is on page number F43, and you might write that next to it of your, of your, of your budget book. So it's not on the, the calculation of the spreadsheet. That is on page F43, which is wastewater enterprise 2022 budget. The next obligation is the current liabilities of $1 million or 1.042. And then Anna will jump back in here because required also to, as accounting entry, to calculate the pension obligation and have it come from the ending restricted fund balance. So Anna, anything else on the, the budget pension obligation?
Yeah, so the pension obligation is a calculation that we do each year and to determine is there any outstanding pension obligation that the city could be liable for specifically for the wastewater employees. So Para has some unfunded balances in their, in their portfolio. And so this just accounts for the portion that the city could possibly be liable for relating to wastewater employees only. And that's why the 5.2 million is there.
Okay, thank you. So that leaves our fund balance available, that is the accounting entry of 1.8. And that I hope answers the question councillor Winter of, of how that 44 million of fund balance in wastewater actually calculated out to and separated when we, when we unwrap all of the wrap ups, the unrestricted fund balance is, looks, looks like this when we get into 2021. All right, and next slide, please. Yes.
At the end of 20, you say, there was 44 million, 45 million?
Yes.
Unrestricted?
Yes.
Why did it become restricted all of a sudden in 2021?
The accounting entries require that you calculate it out of that balance, but they don't actually tell you restricted. It is a gap in accounting procedure and I'll have to leave it back for Anna.
Do we have an unrestricted fund balance at the end of 21?
We will have.
But it'll only be 1.8?
No, sir. It will be the, the, all the things rolled back up, looking similar to the 2020 unrestricted. We just rolled it all out and specified what was included in that end balance.
Economist or I'm not, I'm not a finance person, but the 30 million, 3.30.6 million, you're rolling that forward, those are projects?
Yes, and we're going to turn the page and see.
Are all those going to be done this year?
No.
So they're going to be done 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29? So you're subtracting them off of the unrestricted fund balance of 20, but you may not even use it till 23, 24, 25, 26?
Correct.
And then also the debt obligation, you're not going to pay that all in 21, are you?
Correct.
That's going to, that's 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26?
Correct, it is an accounting entry that's required because of the bonds, the type of bonds that were taken out by wastewater.
Same thing with the pension obligation, you're not going to pay all 5.2 million.
So the cash balance is far greater.
So
A, a financial disclosure only, the financial requirement for the, for the financial statements.
Like I said, I'm not a finance person, but wouldn't it make more sense to, to the, the project budget for 21 have that number in here?
Well, well.
And the current, then the obligation that the, the amount you're going to pay out this year?
The financial reports are audited and they're prepared in accordance with the requirements of the accounting rules.
And, and I want to say about the 30 million, that money is budgeted and appropriated and available for use. So we have to take it out of the fund balance each year because if wastewater had an influx of employees and they were able to do all projects in one year, they could by law spend that 30 million because the money has been budgeted and appropriated and it's available for use. So that's why it has to come off, you know, I doubt they'll get it all done in one year. It's going to go over multiple years, but because it's been budgeted and appropriated, we have to account for it out of that fund balance.
So what is the unrestricted fund, fund balance for the end of 21?
What's still in process?
Is it going to look like anything like 44 million?
It is.
It will, but then we'll still have more projects that will roll forward because during the 2022 budget, we introduced more projects, yes.
Yeah, well, if we, if we unpack that 44 million or whatever it ends up to be, these would be the items included in that amount.
Yeah, I just, I just, I get paid at the end of the month and if I calculated my next 12, 14, 15, 16 months of debts that I have and take it away from that month's pay, of course, I'm going to be in a hole. It just, it just doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right, if we turn the page then.
Ms. Solano?
Yes.
Councilman Flores has a quick question.
I wanted, I wanted to go back to the pension liability. I know that, and if you could explain this to me, Anna, I know that under the GASB rules, that was changed probably four or five years ago where we, we are act, I mean, it's, that's a big dollar amount, but that's, that's assume if the city had to pick up the obligation, there's obviously a fund in there. This really contemplates, you know, the whole pension falling apart, going bankrupt. The government forces the community that owes the pension obligation to, to have enough reserves to pay for the pensions. Could you walk us through that? Because that, that is a huge dollar amount based on the number of employees that are in that department.
No, I, so the pension is a calculation done based on the numbers that Para provides us. I don't have them numbers in front of us, but your first statement was correct that that would be assuming that everything would go bad and that we would have to pick up that pension portion of it. But in full disclosure of saying that, you know, we have 44 million, we, we do have 44 million, but there are some potential liabilities that are out there that we might have to pay. So this listing is everything that we might have to pay so that we wouldn't shortchange our fund balance and then not be able to pay should something happen and then we have this pension expense in the future.
And, and the government rules now forces to do that? There's no, no way around it, is there?
Right, that's correct. I believe it was in 2018 that GASB put out that rule that this would be part of our financial reporting. So we have no choice in that calculation.
Thank you.
And they definitely added. That amount represents, as I understand it, wastewater's portion of PERA's unfunded obligations. It's that PERA, is that correct, Anna? The PERA does a calculation every year saying, in a worst case scenario, this is how much we're short and they split that up among all the entities that contribute there and that's what has to be reported on your financial statement. We obviously have a lot of big.
That's absolutely correct.
liabilities than $5 million with respect to wastewater, but this is PERA's unfunded portion that's attributable to wastewater.
That's absolutely correct.
Just the wastewater, Anna?
Yes.
Just wastewater, that's all this is, just wastewater. This doesn't count general fund employees, airport employees, transit employees. This is just wastewater share of that unfunded liability.
And you see the same thing in the financial statement for those other departments that are enterprises and general fund?
Yeah, that's more or less saying, just as an example, the pair is telling us, they, they, if, if everything goes bad, they can at least handle 60% of what their obligation is and everyone else is responsible for 40 in the worst possible scenario. But I, I think that's why we're forced to do that.
Very good. And the next slide, I, right before I turn it over to Andra, is, is actually the itemized listing of the, I think, 22 or so projects that totaled to the $30 million that have already been presented to city council throughout the years, as you watch the years change there, that have been budgeted and appropriated and are in process or will be in process. And the revised budget column, what, what they spent in wastewater in 2021, what the total of the prior year expenses are, what are total expenses and what is an available budget that adds up to the 30 million? I would like to draw your attention to about midway through that list and it's the project wastewater 9999 and it is projects to be determined. And that is an amount of $2,370,556 and some change there that they budget for when they prepare the wastewater budget that will have the, the dollars there in the event that they need to cover wastewater emergency, the projects that have, that they have to address or elevated to the top, they have enough resources already. So it is funded annually at, depending on how much money and when they calculate their total budget, they allocate to projects to be determined. And any other questions you have about any of the other on the page, I'll turn it over to Andra. She'll take it from there and on to the next before, right after the mayor talks.
Yeah, let me, let me just point out, you see this where the project there says WWW, the first one says 1203. Those numbers indicate that this first appeared in the budget and the money was allocated in 2012. Okay, so that electrical upgrade has been in the budget since 2012. It shows you what we spent previously, but you can see some of these have been in the budget since 2000. Sustainability, that's been there since 2021, 2014, 2015. So these, these have been there a long time, these projects that are listed there. And sometimes money is spent annually and sometimes money is not, but.
That's a yearly number?
Yes.
Yeah, that number there tells you what year it first appeared in the budget.
Okay.
When it was budgeted and appropriated.
But for instance, that sustainability, you do 500,000 every year.
No, that's 500,000 since 2003. Or 2000, it's 2000.
No.
And in order for them to move it to a different project, that, that action would require that Andra or wastewater come to city council and you have moved budget numbers before for projects and she will say she's reducing this project and asking your approval to move it to a different project when they identify what that might be.
Andra, it's yours from here.
Thanks for having me tonight, council members, mayor. So we're going to talk about the fund balance and just some information about how it all works. We're going to go through the, the work projects or the water reclamation facility projects first, then we're going to go through some of the collection system projects and lists and then up sizing projects. All right, so I know, so when we talk about the electrical upgrade, it was separated out to seven phases. We're on page four. So you can see that each year we are, have been adding because the original project, when it was proposed in 2012, was going to be done in a stage process that was very quick. But as they were looking at that project, they determined that they couldn't do it like as phase 13 was, phase one was done, then they could do phase two right away. So now it's taken longer because it was actually supposed to be done in 2020. But a lot of those, when they did this, the master plan in 2016, a lot of those estimates ended up being a lot more expensive. That's why we keep talking about phase four being $7 million because right now, we, for the whole project, we have $6,698, I'm sorry, $6,698,472. And so we are, as we've said, that one is over budget. And once we take that, we'll have to wait quite a while before phase five will go into place because it will, it's actually more expensive than this one. It was originally two times. So we're waiting to see, we don't know what phase five will be, but right now, we will probably budget in the next few years to re-up this fund. And then the gravity thickener pump replacement that was done, they're looking at that now. At the time, the reason it's been just as a placeholder is we weren't sure if we were actually going to just redo that whole thing, but they are looking at that this year to do. And then the sustainability study, we've been waiting on that for a while now and so we put 500,000 in there for any upgrades that we need to do. Most of the same sustainability studies is going to be 65,000, but that'll come out of a different budget. This is really for any upgrades we need to actually put infrastructure in. Polymer system upgrade, they need it, they're probably going to be looking at that either this year or next year. And then we have one, it's called the treatment plant rehab equipment. And when you get to that particular one, you'll see it's a WWAN04. That means we annually put money in there because that way we always have money to do upgrades to the plant. And then also, if we have to have any emergency equipment bought, that's what we would use that for. So we've used that recently for stair stepper repairs at the headworks, secondary clarifier rehab, and then also the vertical turbine rehab. So those are the facility projects and then, so.
On that page, the $2,99,215 is not what the treatment plant rehab is going to cost, that's what we have in that account.
That's what we have in that account.
That we've contributed in years past.
Yes. And I, let me see. I think we contribute at least a million a year, just to make sure that as they spend it, we recover it. And in the past, we've had a maintenance person that maintenance was delayed. So right now, a lot of, we have a new person, a coordinator that's going through and upgrading quite a bit of stuff. So we're happy that it's being used.
And may I add that all of them are on the previous page as part of the 30 million in that list of projects and, and ties to the dollar value remaining. Thank you.
So we've talked about the, we do have a list that the engineering section has of 300, got to do it for you. So there is a pipe segment list of 353 of them or 20 miles of pipe. They are all rated using the NASCO Pipeline Assessment Certification Program criteria. That's what the pictures are showing. This is from the training sheets. You can see like fractures in the pipe and how they're going to evaluate them. So the collection crew televises the line, notes defects in the engineering, and then the engineering staff reviews the video to determine what level the defect is, one through six pipes that are rated five are in the most need of repair. And then the way this list works is new pipe sections are added to the list each year and then 31 to 36 pipe segments are taken off each year. This is one of the funds that I'll get into a little bit later, but it is one that we always fund this account. So it's another AN or annual fund. So then on the next page, these are, these are funds that we use pretty much every year. And then some of them are very specific to different pipe segments that will need repairs or lining. So point repairs are done with, let's say there's a sag in a line, we just fixed that particular section of pipe. So that amount is 621,278. We, the manholes, they are, the collection crew determines these, we're, we are going to spend 485,000 this year to do manholes throughout the city that the collection crew has determined are enough defects that we either need to line them or repair them. So that project is ongoing and should be completed by the end of the year. Funds will be put in that account next year, usually around 500 to 600,000, and then we use it that year. The selenium reduction projects, we have 2 million left. You'll see originally the account had 12 minute, 12 million dollars in it, but we're down to 2 million. That was the one, that account is used for specifically in basin three that overlays the pier shale that has selenium and sulfate in it. And that we have to do according to the discharge specific variance that we have that groundwater infiltration. So we are looking to see how much we can do this year once, if hopefully we'll have wet weather in the spring and so we can find more spots. That we, if we have some money left over, we'll use it for pilots, but we are planning on doing our pilot studies next year and putting $1 million into that because we do have to do that according to the DSV to figure out if treatment is available to treat sulfate and selenium at the plant if we cannot control it through lining or replacing the pipes. And then the next one that we have on there is Elizabeth. Elizabeth has two problems. Its capacity, it's over, it, and then it has sags in it, so it's not flowing quite right. We are doing a study right now because to replace and upgrade that pipe would cost about $3 million. We only have a million budgeted. So we're looking to see if we can move off some of the flow into other lines and maybe just fix the sags in that area because it is causing problems because we're having, there's restaurants along there that they're not the problem, the sags are, so grease builds up really bad. So we're looking at that. The Bessimer ditch is two iron pipes that go under it. And this project, if you look on this sheet, you'll see that it's been out there since 2014, but this year we're moving on it. And this project, if you look on this sheet, you'll see that it's been out there since twenty fourteen, but this year we're moving on it. Right now it looks like it's four hundred and thirty five, but we're, we have four hundred budgeted. That's where the projects to be determined comes into place so we can cover that. And what we're going to do is clean those ductile iron lines and then line them so that they should be good. Fifty years and beyond. So we'll continue to look at those. That I would have to look up. I'm sorry. I don't know. So. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. So each year. We spend three million dollars on eleven to fifteen repair segments. And so we can do eleven to fifteen repair and replace projects. Which means we actually, the pipes are so bad, we take them out and they cannot be lined or there's some other issue there. So we take them out and then replace them. And then if we can line them, we'll do about twenty lining projects each year. And that actually. It gives us more bang for our buck because we don't have to actually take the pipes out. We don't have to do a lot of the survey work. We can use the lines that are there. The problem is sometimes lining, the lining gets over cured or has wrinkles in it or other issues that can sometimes cause problems with the lining. But we try to make sure that we televise the line afterwards because they do have a two year warranty on those liners. And so we do make sure that if there is any problems that we can usually go back and get the company to fix whatever the problem is.
Hey, Andrea.
Yeah.
How long do lines last compared to how long do pipes last?
I'm sorry, I'm using that interchangeably. Lines and pipes are the same to me. They're usually. About fifty years for the plastic pipes, but we have pipes that in the city that are over a hundred years old and they were supposed to be done at fifty, but they're still going. So that's why we're doing the televising of the lines and clean them and maintain them to make sure that they last a long time. Because we have some beautiful brick pipe in the city that is over a hundred years old, but is still working well. And we watch it to make sure that if anything goes wrong, we're. So. You'll see that when we look at like the small main lining projects, there's six million in there. We usually only use three so that we can keep money in there in case of emergencies, which we have had. Where there was a sinkhole like on Abrianda where we had to do something right away because the pipe had deteriorated and collapsed. So we always want to make sure that we are able to keep the system running smoothly. Because if we, if it runs smoothly, most people don't care about it. It's when you guys are dealing with sewage that you get phone calls. So we're always trying to make sure. And then the large main repair right now, you'll see there's two million in there. We are adding some money this year. We are building up that fund because the trunk line that goes from Fountain Creek to the headworks of the plant. Right now is it's a concrete line. It's sixty inches and it is showing some of the aggregate. So we're worried about that line. So right now our estimates are it'll cost about six million dollars on whatever we choose. So right now we're building up the funds so that we can afford to do something. And then the last box. We were asked to come up with some projects for lines and so we came up with thirty four repair and replace. That were not on the schedule for twenty twenty two. These are outside of it. The projects were chosen based on price funds that could be encumbered within December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And spent by December thirty first of twenty twenty six, they are rated five and above, so they are the worst. They're not. The worst lines and will require additional, we're willing to cover the additional costs for professional services such as the surveying. Because this would equal three years of pipe replacement for us if we were going to do them. You do have, I think they did get the list, right? They got the spreadsheet. So this is what this looks like. You'll see a lot of it is what V C P pipe is, is vitrified clay pipe. So it tends to be, it's really great resistant to corrosion, but it can be very brittle. And you'll see there across the city and a lot of its eight inch pipe to six inch different varying sizes. And the thirty four projects total approximately six million dollars. Yeah, I know. I, that's why I said they have this, right? Because even I was like, this is small. So collection system projects, these are specific projects that money was put away for. And so. As we go through, I'll explain and you'll see when you look at the numbers that some of these have been on our list since twenty sixteen, some of them twenty fourteen. And that's just because we knew we needed money at that time to complete the projects when the development would go through. So like the heart project, we have a million dollars there. We're just waiting on the completion of their project before we would go through. But we wanted to make sure we had money there. So that's been setting in that account since. For a while. And then the Menacqua lift station, we put five hundred and fifty thousand dollars aside. So that when the area is developed, we do have some money to put a lift station in because that area is really flat. And then the Otero Boulevard extension, otherwise known as the Southern Colorado Clinic. We put seven hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand and fourteen in that account. Because we knew at the time we, when it was developed, we would have to pay for the line. So that money was put in there, but ARPA money of ARPA money was approved for two million dollars. So with both of those, we're hoping we'll cover most of that cost. Fountain and Ash, that line is a siphon. It goes across, it goes under fountain. It was put in in nineteen thirty. We can't televise it to determine the condition of the pipe. So we're trying to make sure that we do have some money and evaluate what we want to do there. So that's why that was put in and then. The can, because it's a siphon, it goes like this. And so the camera would have to go down. It goes underwater. So we can't really see it anymore. So we are looking to figure out what we can do there to figure out the condition of it. Because it's pulling water. Normally it's going to get sprayed there and normally you'd put a lift station, but they chose in that time period to do a siphon. So. We also don't know where. Yeah, because it, once it flows, it'll pull the water across. It's the opposite of what you see for irrigation dishes where they pull it this way. We're just pulling it this way like a straw. So. We also don't know where that line is or how deep it is because fountain, of course, moves with sediment. So we're, we, we know that's an issue, but it's working really well. So that's why that money is there and. Until it doesn't, yes. Yeah. Capacity improvements that we have a million dollars, we're putting another, that's to cover all of the up sizing of pipes that we will need funds for. And so with the discussion with planning and public works. We came up with this list of pipes that need to be upsized. And the total is twenty four million dollars. These, this is not in our budget. This is what we would be building for. We have Vision Hills from Cedar Reed to Jerry Murphy. Constitution Division, West Side Balden Lake from twenty first to eleventh street. That's the jail and Wild Horse Development are taking a large portion of capacity. And I think part of that is the ARPA funds that they were talking to you about, correct? The jail for the county? Okay. And then Green Horn to Lake and then Lake from Highland to Northern and Thatcher from Pablo Boulevard to Prairie. And then just to touch on. Projects to be determined. So. We don't actually put money in this. What happens if you look on your list of projects, you'll see that some of these just have money left over. Like the treatment plant paving has a thousand dollars, the aeration has fifty four thousand. And the process improvements for twenty seventeen has thirty six. What happens is we end up rolling them over into this account. So that when we do have overages, we hope to cover them. So like we have a couple of projects now that we're looking at that we will probably use this, some of this money this year. Like for phase four, if we need, we're for a million short, we'll pull it from this before. To cover the costs or any other costs that we may need to cover during the year. Are we having questions? Sure. Councilwoman Tenzio.
Yeah, the Otero Boulevard extension, seven hundred and seventy thousand you have in there.
Right.
And the two million ARPA funds that have been approved, is that the two million that's going to go behind the Y M C A? That's what they're talking about there. Okay. List of projects discussed, Vision Hills, Constitution Division, all those. With these new developments that are going in. Would we consider impact fees? There's a myriad of things we could do when new developments are going in and they pay for the things that we are paying for. I understand that developers do put in some, but.
Well, as I said at the outset, it's pretty clear to me that on that west side. And as we come through town, a lot of the pipes going to have to be upsized with that increased volume. I've asked staff to study it and figure out what needs to be done. How much will it cost? So we can figure out, okay, is there ARPA money available for this? And if so, the city will probably have to bite the bullet because no developer is going to go in and do that, even though the ordinance is say they have to. We'll have to bite the bullet and then we'll have to figure out a way, can we impose impact fees for new developers when they come in and say, this is your share of that.
Yeah. We're going to have to look at it.
Yeah.
I, I understand that we are responsible for up sizing the existing lines. That go to the developer. The developer does everything within their development. Correct?
No, actually, the ordinance is saying, I think the developer has to upsize any off. Premises lines that his discharge is going to overburden. And you know, that's, you know, that, that will stop development.
But they may not do that.
Well, they won't do that because it costs a lot of money. And so that's why we're looking at that situation to say, you know, this is something the city is probably going to have to take on. We're the ones that will have to figure it out, but we're just getting started on figuring that out. We've known since the jail was going in that some of those lines were going to have to be upsized. But in my mind, at least, we don't have a good handle yet on exactly what has to be done to make it work and what it's going to cost.
Yeah, because other cities charge impact fees to developers and developments all over the place. We don't. But. The ARPA money isn't going to last very long and it's only going to be for two years. So. How we. Build more developments and do the infrastructure for those developments. We have to take those things into consideration. And I know there, you know, there are fees, but my point is that. A lot of cities do. They may not be called impact fees, but. Oh geez, I can't think right off the top of my head. I got my notes at home. I'll, I'll be right back. Wait for me. You know, you know what I'm talking about. There's, there's a myriad of, of things that can be done to, to mitigate anyway.
Well, we have some income coming in from the. Connection fee that we just upcharged by, you know, those new fees.
So those fees right now, there's two million dollars for collections and three millions for the plant. The plant cannot be used for anything except for when we breach capacity of eighty percent, which is approximately. An extra four million gallons right now of our design capacity of nineteen million. So. Two million dollars is what we would be able to use. We've talked about that as well for some of these growth related.
Councilman Flores.
I, I was, I'm looking at the project budget roll forward page. And I'm looking at all of these titles of things that you need to do and. The budget amount, the expenses, et cetera. When, when, and maybe this is a question for you. Laura, and that is when we're formulating the budget. Does the budget reflect this page and does it have, are they confined to just live within these titles and these budget amounts? Or do they have any flexibility where they can move money around within their department?
The budget reflects the thirty million in the restricted balance. And then the amount that is the middle of the page projects to be determined is what fluctuates. So depending on how much revenue and expenses they bring in. Nancy, who's, you know, who was the director for many years, she would come into the capital improvement conversation and say, this is what I believe our budget can, can withstand as we move this money around. They can move none of it once it's identified as a project though, without coming to city council to disclose it and then for your approval.
So yeah, my, my question really was whether this department has the flexibility to move things around. Because it looks like there is some money that's been sitting in some of these areas for a while. And I guess that's my next question. If, if they're on the list, why aren't we just doing them? If, if in fact. You know, instead of just letting the money sit there.
So I'm going to take Ontario Boulevard. We knew that that project had been done, like we knew we were going to have to do that eventually. And so we just put the money aside because we didn't know exactly what it was. Same with Menacqua. We're just waiting for the development to come and then we at least have funds to do that. That's why it's sitting in there, some of these. And some of them were developed, like the electrical upgrade. Although that fund was started in twenty twelve, we constantly, we still use it. That money is used in and out of that account quite a bit for the different phases that have been going on.
Well, it's good to know that you have the flexibility though to move things around in the event of an emergency and another spot. Thank you.
Yeah, so these funds that you have, these little savings accounts, let me, in my parlance. Basically, that's what accounts for the fund balance. Correct? See, I'm learning. Little by little. Okay, that, that helps me a little bit because. Even though we end up with forty four million at the end, a lot of that is still going to be encumbered. We just haven't spent it yet and we haven't done the project yet. Yeah, projects.
So Andrea, it sounds like what I'm hearing, the collection system project list, the thirty four projects that totals around six million. Those are the ones that you are putting forth for ARPA. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And that's all for ARPA.
Well, partially. This is the list that is condensed to this amount of money after conversation with the boss. Who said if you were going to spend money on ARPA, you know, what could you feasibly encumber by twenty twenty four and complete by twenty twenty six as required by ARPA? Some of these will have to have external work, though the cost will be greater because the capacity of our current staff will not be such that all of these can be complete. They're all lining projects and this is the common record keeping out of a wastewater treatment plant to track by code on the left, the priority code. How they rise to the top of needing to be addressed. So you could take five million out of that because the west side might need more. You could take two million out of it or you could do with, you know, whatever. We just in our meeting said, if you spent six million and approved it from ARPA. These would be the amounts, these would be the top streets that could be repaired. Their lining would be repaired with ARPA funding.
And they would, and they're not part of our project list for twenty twenty two, so these were addition to it.
Councilor Mastry. So what you're saying is, is that you've come up with a number of about six million. And this is your priority. But that twenty four million is also another need, correct?
Twenty four million is a separate listing of which the conversation of the west side has not yet been, been had.
Correct, but I, the twenty four is really another need on top of the six million plus we've got the west side.
Plus the remainder. Plus, the remainder of this list, whose, whose priority list numbers continue to go down. But it is the appropriate record keeping for all wastewater plants to keep tracking as that priority number increases. So they're doing their appropriate due diligence of the wastewater to go and test and to keep a record of the streets that potentially are going to rise to this same priority list where the highest number is a five point six. Now, what that means, though, is far beyond me.
Okay. Other questions before we move on? Uh, Councilor Tenzio.
I'm sorry, but are we looking at the fund balance? To see if we can have some money from there for this six million? Or are you just saying, okay, we're going to do fund balance and we want another six million from ARPA to do this?
So when we do our pipe lining, or when we take care of that three hundred and fifty-three pipes that we have on there, we do about two million of repairs each year. And then we, we ask for an additional six million for these others, yes. So it is exactly what you said, fund balance plus the extra six million.
So you will be looking at fund balance, let's say you'll have two million in the fund balance that you can use for this. And you wouldn't need six from ARPA, you would need four.
If you wanted to do just four from ARPA, that would work as well, we would just cut down the list.
No, that's not what I asked, make the list whole. But if you had two million in, in the fund balance, plus four million from ARPA, you wouldn't have to ask for four million, if you had two million in fund balance that you could use for this list, you wouldn't have to ask for six from ARPA, you would ask for four.
That, that's correct, Larry, it's a combination of all the above, which again doesn't address, and why, depending on who was sitting there, which department director. When our public works director was sitting there and our planning director, it was, well, wait a minute, we have some growth in the city, which is that secondary list of another twenty-four million, but that hasn't yet come to a full discussion. So a combination of all of those, we wanted to disclose all the sources that may be, you know, available.
When we discover those sources, then we'll know what that number is that we're asking from ARPA.
There's actually another list of projects that that two million that's in the budget has been, and I assume those are the worst streets, right? They score higher. Well, the D score, five and above as well. So I mean, this.
Comes from the second tranche? Or that's what we're thinking?
It would, sir. The second tranche of funds.
All right, just.
Councilor Winner.
So since ARPA will allow you to use all of that money for city infrastructure, how can they possibly expect it to be done by twenty twenty-six? You know, all that infrastructure needs, so it seems to me there should be some kind of leniency when you're taking on a big project that it would definitely take more than two years.
I think our city attorney will have to talk about the legal side of what ARPA is allowing.
It has to be completed by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. It has to be committed two years sooner. There's no leeway.
Okay, so if you have, if you have all the streets torn up and it's still not done, they're not going to give you the money, they'll take the money away?
We'll have to return it if we don't spend it.
Is all the work that needs to be done, is it to be done by the city? Or is there contractors that are going to be some of, doing some of it?
Oh, we bid out everything and it's contractors.
Okay.
So we don't do any of the lining or any of the replacements?
So then we can, we're not relying on our own selves to get it done, so we can actually push that faster than necessary.
Yeah, so part of the presentation was, we're going to use, so last time, city council, you approved that we could use other surveyors. So then we could use other surveyors and we could use at least two or three on different projects. And then we could use different contractors for different projects as well.
So we could like fast, put, put it to use very quickly to meet the requirements, okay?
And when the engineering manager was asked for this, we made sure that these, this, this list could be done within the requirements of ARPA.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
It's, it's to replace. Right, there, that's why it's six million is because it, we did the, probably the more expensive way of that, that we could do it would be, because.
Councilor Martinez Ortega.
Yes, thanks, Andra. The, I'm curious as to, is it more costly or more expensive to use these contractors? Instead of relying on our own selves?
We don't have any staff to do it, so we have to use contractors.
Okay, got it.
Other questions or comments before we move on?
My comment was going to be about capacity and it's going to be some sort of a shuffle, what in our community? You know, I guess it's a, and waiting for the infrastructure bill, how much is coming to Pueblo? And, and we understand from those webinars that the state is receiving some and the state will, will filter some to us, but there will be either a direct allocation or one through the state that will come and that, we don't know yet if any of that will be available for this type of infrastructure and/or the capacity to get how much done. And then we have all the other subdivision on the west side that's still to be discussed.
Yeah.
But that money probably won't be restricted to December of twenty twenty-six.
I don't, I don't think it is.
I'm talking about the, the new money.
The infrastructure bill money, I don't think it does have a restriction. All I've heard is stuff from the Dollar Weekly Reports and I think Senator Hickenlooper's visit with information about it, pretty broad, so we, we need to know more.
Councilor Tenzio.
Yeah, just what Lori said, if these projects aren't done by the end of twenty-six, we better be careful what we bite off because we may end up, like that article you sent me from Denver, having to pay back a lot of money. So we better make sure that these projects are going to be done by twenty-six, you know, so, I mean. Otherwise, we pay back.
They're ready to go to work, everybody's, yeah, there's a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Arians.
Thank you, Andra.
Not on, I'm just yelling at you. No wonder, that left a balance of one point six and again, it is off by our payroll just a bit, if you talk to our compliance auditor. Now, out of that balance then came round number four of community submissions, requests for funding. And on the next slide, you have already heard on twenty, on February fourteenth from the group of five that are listed there and the amounts with which they requested from you. And you heard on February twenty-second, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, the additional list there and the amounts that they requested of you by category. And if you, one more slide, and we turn the page on the slide deck here. On March the twenty-first, these remaining individual requests for funding projects are intended to, are slated to come to present their program to you. We would, after discussion tonight and your direction, if you, if you're ready, we would like to move those last reports or presentations to you to this coming Monday, March the seventh. So that in the event city council gives a direction to the mayor and to staff to move forward on funding of so many of them. You heard from them that they're needing these resources now. So that allows the city attorney to start to put into place and craft the subrecipite agreements. It requires us to return with those agreements to city council in, as an ordinance or a resolution, depending on who the, the submitter request for the project was. And that's going to put funding back until late April for any that you do approve and give direction to fund. So we are hoping for your direction this evening on, yes, accelerate and invite them next Monday. It is a non-televized evening, it may be another late night, but that moves all of the ARPA in round four to completion that we're wanting and waiting to present to you. And that's the report from our, our twenty twenty-one tranche, and next slide, please. And now what we have in place in Julia's shop is a lot of requests that we've looked at, at the internal, with the mayor, the internal discussion and the internal task force, that they've either gone out for additional information, they went out to work in a combined effort on joint projects like the Neighbor Works project. That is a five million dollar request all by itself. We have a few individual projects that are, are youth work centers. And they are working collaboratively, we have youth projects working collaboratively, we have nonprofits working collaboratively. We have the Southern Colorado Economic Development Division working with the Small Business Development Center on a one million dollar revolving loan fund to help small businesses, they would like to present to you. And from, from the mayor's direction to staff, we were waiting for direction from city council on your direction on how you see priority spending of the second tranche that, of the eighteen point two million that we are anticipated to receive in May.
Ms. Wano, I have a, I have a quick question before we talk about that. The, so the balance available from tranche one in twenty twenty-two was about one point six million. The, the three rounds that we listened to on the fourteenth, the twenty-second, and then Monday, does that all equate to one point six million?
It's actually over. It is over in our calculation because we pull from our salaries, but they, no, they're not paid, God bless them. You know, they're working good and hard, but you know, it's, it is pulling payroll out along the way. There is a bit of over fun, over presentation there that would have to come out of the twenty twenty-two tranche of funds if you approved it all. And I'm sorry, I don't have the total there calculated for you, which I normally would have done. If Regina Council and Mastry has jumped ahead here because the calculation of the lost revenue is specific to only spending on governmental services. So that we have to identify if any of those are governmental services, they would be allowed to be funded out of the nine point four million dollars. Or they would not be, you know, and we would rely on, on legal counsel to tell us which pot, a bucket of money would be able to fund that project if you gave approval and direction to fund.
So out of this tranche, the three tranches that we're looking at, some of these could actually be funded? I mean, because Pueblo Community College is, you know, it's a state facility, it's a government facility. And then Fire Fit Kids is through the City Fire Department. It is, yeah. And then Pueblo Convention Center. Is, isn't that, aren't we affiliated with them, isn't that city tied to the city?
Okay. Can, can, can I jump to that, shall we go through that list first? And then I'll, I have to ask advance the advice of the mayor and Dan with respect to what, out of any of, either of those would qualify as either governmental services or under the four categories of funding from ARP, from ARPA. Okay, so in our, I think you're going to move forward one slide, thank you. ARPA provided for an opportunity to calculate lost revenue. And I think the mayor took us all through that calculation in a work session where the city's lost revenue calculation for twenty twenty-one, moving into twenty twenty-two is nine point four million. And Dan will follow up with, and Anna, they're going to allow to go through that calculation again in now when we close the year of twenty twenty-one. But out of this nine point four million, we have department directors who have presented to the mayor priority expenditures that really would, would help the city move forward in the category of governmental services provided to the community. They are in no particular order here and I'll go through them. Oh, excuse me, the IT software storage, our capacity to save and to store is at limit. And the mayor's a priority item for approval is the two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're storing the necessity things for finance backup, for body cameras, a lot of the priority things that we need extended storage for in IT. The mayor and, and public works are working on incredible gateway archways for three neighborhoods, one on Union Avenue, one on Northern and one on, I think, eight, Eighteenth Street that are welcome to historic Bessemer, welcome to historic Union Avenue. And this is an estimated cost only of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was Eighth Street, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, I say you, Union and one on Eighth Street, yes. I might have, my eyes looked and the one added to the eight. Parks and Rec, you know, we're trying to put into more practice and use the El Centro renovation. Our director of Parks and Rec and the mayor actually went to a tour of that facility. Right now, the holding place is of a million dollars so that there is a location for a youth to be utilized of our El Centro, our Quinto de Soul, that does need, I think it needs an HVAC system, it needs some upgrades. And this million dollars would allow for those upgrades. The Parks and Rec, we have a continuing need to replace mowers in all of our parks as parks continue to grow. We have eighty-one parks that are mowed by the city staff. This is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and Stephen is up on phone a friend somewhere and would tell you how many those are. Parks and Rec also, we have, have been having discussion for three years. In Mineral Palace Park, we have an old greenhouse that would be wonderfully to be renovated. Now that we have streetscapes that are taken into the Horticulture Department in Parks and Recreation, that facility could be used to grow our own plants for all of the parks. It could be used as a learning center that's associated with youth in the community. It could be utilized by the Pueblo Food Project for the community garden growing. And so that's a high on the list of, of funding and it would be utilized across the city at one point five million. The Planning Department, you have all heard the comprehensive plan. And the next step in the comprehensive plan is to actually modify the unified code. The unified code would be managed by an external consultant. And I think our, our director of planning says an estimated two hundred and twenty-five thousand for that expenditure. Then Public Works turn with the expansion in the city and to, in order to serve the citizens. Director Hayes is acting, asking for two dump trucks with snow plows. And he actually wanted to purchase those last week because I think we had snow coming and like, well, we've got to hold on a minute because we have a process to go through and approval to talk about first. And then continuing on to the next slide, please. Public Works has also said, if we really do need a skid steer with a bucket and a jackhammer at a hundred and fifty thousand. And if that happens, we also need the two equipment trailers that accompany it along with the electric sweepers, four-wheel sweepers for two hundred and sixty thousand. In the mayor's office, we are, received a grant for the Financial Empowerment Center that we had to partner with, and it's not really his office, it's just the grant and I facilitate there. The Financial Empowerment Center where the United Way is the provider and we are in partnership. The Financial Empowerment Center where the United Way is the provider and we are in partnership is the city. We have to fund a year one match of a hundred and fifty thousand and year two of two hundred thousand. I requested of the mayor twenty five thousand for each year and add to put the fifty thousand there. We are finding matches for that grant to be successful from Neighbor Works. Workforce Center, Pueblo County Human Services with a ten of dollars. And we're in the process of those discussions every day now as we put together our grant request. Out of the mayor's office, and this really was a Bloomberg philanthropy. Technical advisor named Resource X that helped discussion of a priority based budget. And for for thirty thousand dollars, they will continue their relationship with the city. And the primary purpose will be, I think it's a three year agreement. And they're going to facilitate with with budget finance and Public Works in agreeing some of the city buildings where solar is appropriate. Assisting in the Police Department with which vehicles should be electric. And how do we charge them with the Transit Department in facilitating the purchase of I think the mayor's directed the last hybrid bus be purchased and now the transition into electric buses. So some of those projects, Resource X would continue to work with. The Police Department and the chief is in attendance tonight. This is a new RMS CAD system of a computer system of one point two million that would, I think, replace and be in what installed in all of the police vehicles in the city. And right now, I think some of them are struggling and it's rather old. There's also a portion of this. It's it's actually expected to be one point eight to two million cost. The other portion of this cost will be borne out of the Capital Improvement Plan in twenty twenty two that's in the year budget that you already approved when we passed the budget. It just, you know, costs have gone incredibly higher in in all of the technology. So the one point two from that, there are no priority order here. These are what how we had the discussions in the office. And we're finding out of human resources, and you all know this, and I have a spelling error there. It's a comprehensive compensation study, you know, position by position, a finance director, director as they come in. We're having trouble, you know, meeting market. And so those compensation studies are comprehensive and it is managed by an external consultant. And we prioritized a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars collectively out of the nine point four million. That's a total of six point eight to date. Six point zero eight. And that leaves out of that tranche or not really that bucket of funds three point three million that are required to be used for governmental services. Now, Council Ray Street, I think you were asking questions about some of those that were already reported or or presented to city council. Could any of those reported in February be funded through this three million dollars? I think that was her question, counselor and mayor, and I don't I don't know which, if any, in particular, like the she was talking about the Fire Fitness?
Fire Fit Kids.
The Fire Fit Kids.
I I also, when you were speaking, Miss Wano, I did some crude math. And of the three presentations that we, if you add them all up of the the remaining funds of the tranche, it's about one point eight six million dollars.
I think it is.
Which means that it's over appropriated by a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars.
I think you are correct, spot on.
Another thing too that we haven't even talked about, and I wanted to try to bring it to our attention, is the the CSET funds that we get from the the Emergency Services Funds that the county gets and helps us with our police radios. That's going to be done in twenty twenty three. So that may be some fees that we have to pick up here through the city. And we make need to get in with the sheriff because he's the one that doles that money out and see where we're at with the chief of police. And what are the city's costs are going to be involved in that? Because there, I don't, I can't remember if it's a hundred, if it's hundreds of thousand or actually a million dollars that we get out of that, we have, we need to find out what that's going to be. Because that's going to be, you know, something we're not used to carrying in our budget. And this may be a place where we could use the three million. So if we could set like a work session up for that. Yeah, I think that's why we should have a work session and see how much that's going to really cost us. And then so that's that there's a million. You know. And then some of this other stuff that we're over, but can we? Can we find out if some of this stuff really qualifies? I mean, yeah, I mean I and I don't mean to be, you know. But you know, some of this stuff looks like it's not sustainable that we listen to and that it may not qualify. And so we just need some questions asked to
I think our judgment is that all the presentations were made to you did qualify under ARPA, that they qualified for for ARPA funds, or we wouldn't have brought them to you if we thought they didn't.
Well, some of them don't cease. I mean, when you're bringing a new and developing a new department or a new part of your program. If you can't start up the fees to develop to start that up yourself, how do you make it sustainable on some of those programs? That's a question. Juneteenth was a question.
It's a scholarship, yeah.
You know, and so is it sustainable, though? I mean, they don't have enough money to even run their program this year. What what is the, how do they generate their money? So they can have that in following years. And so there's just a lot of those questions that we had talked about, you know, once we buy buses for people are, who's going to maintain the buses? If they can't purchase them now, can they purchase ones in four or five years when when you can't use them anymore? I mean, those those to me, it one of the things they say it has to sustain you. Does are those, if you can't pick them up on your own time the next time, then that to me doesn't make sense as to be being sustainable. You know.
Counselor Warner.
Wasn't this a question you were asking?
Well, I think. Well.
I'd like an answer.
An answer on that first. Okay, I was just going to add.
If we buy him a bus now and they can't replace the bus when it's old. Does that mean we shouldn't give them the bus now? I don't know. That's a policy judgment. You know, they need the bus now to to move people around. I think we're talking about the Center for Disabilities, as I recall, or PDI. Was the one that needed that.
And Boys and Girls.
Boys and Girls Club, yeah, there were several transportation vehicles.
Yeah.
So that that's a judgment call, you know. Yeah, I mean, that's how they funded, I think, their buses in the past is with grants from different organizations. That's what this is. So yeah, I don't, I can't predict whether in five or 10 years when those buses were out, whether they'll be able to replace them or not.
You know, because a lot of those organizations, they have grant writers and they chase grants. And there are grants out there specifically for transportation needs. So why would the ARPA funds, you know, go towards something like that when they can work with those certain type of grants? I'm just wondering, you know, what their grant writing capabilities are and how they're chasing their grants. Because it seems like, you know, we get a lot of requests coming from five oh one C threes that I don't even know if some of them have grant writers because there's there's a ton of grants out there to fulfill those types of needs. And 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 because, I'm sorry, and because there's such a huge need in our wastewater treatment plant, I mean, and some of our infrastructure that qualifies, there's such a huge need. That sounded like, just from what they showed us, we haven't talked about the West Side yet. So we were we're up to, there was thirty million, thirty thirty million and then more. Yeah. So.
Mr. Kagosek, though, do you want to respond to Mr. Maestria?
Yes, I I agree with the mayor. I think those are policy calls. What's the best way to spend this ARPA money? All of those projects qualify. But I want to address a prior question from Laura, and that is the crossover between ARPA projects and revenue replacement government projects. They don't cross over. There's only one project. And that's El Centro that could qualify for ARPA. All the others would not would not qualify for ARPA funds. And vice versa. Buying buying trucks and whatever Public Works needs are don't fit the four categories of ARPA. So I only see one that could cross over.
Would you, when you say it's our policies and our judgment. But we do need to follow the rule, correct?
Absolutely.
That it is sustainable, that we feel that it's a sustainable.
No, sustain sustainable is is not a criteria under ARPA. ARPA says we're going to help people who were impacted by the COVID crisis. That's these, these are people. And it's aimed at those who were disproportionately impacted, which means low income people. That's category number one. Category number two is we're going to pay essential workers premium pay. Category three is the infrastructure for broadband and a water and sewer. Category four
Is responding to the health emergency.
Is the loss revenue for the government entities.
So sustain sustainability is not a requirement of the law. But as these community groups evaluated these proposals, that is something we asked them to take a look at. The sustainability, we don't want to create a new program without looking like there was some kind of plan in place for that to continue afterwards. So to that extent, the the programs that were brought before you were ones that the community groups that evaluated these thought were sustainable. So to that extent, the sustainability was taken into consideration in the evaluations of the programs that they did.
Ms. Warner.
Yeah, I I was, I'm probably going to bring up, bring up exactly what Larry wants to talk about. And my issue also is how were a lot of these things affected by COVID? You know, we even have new positions and it's like, well, you didn't have this position before. So why, why is, why do you need this new position because of COVID?
Because they're providing services to people who were disproportionately impacted by the COVID disease.
Okay, so so like a bounce house, how is, how is that? You know, COVID related, like, oh, you know, just a lot of this is just not making any sense to me.
You're reaching out to schoolchildren.
Who were affected by COVID?
No, schoolchildren who need additional education and entertainment and it fits. Because these are kids who attend District sixty, who's one of the lowest income school districts in the state. So I forget how much that was. Do you remember seven?
Seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, yeah.
And then and then the the advertising for somebody that just never spent money on advertising before. I mean, they they were saying that they bring in ninety million dollars in agricultural tours.
No, you're talking about the historic.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have visited with them and and they are going to adjust their proposal.
Okay, so how do I'm just asking how that qualifies? How how does that qualify with COVID?
Well, because as a result of COVID, they lost revenue.
They don't have any revenue. Historic Connections has no revenue.
Wait a minute, the the museums do, the Steel Workers Museum, all the museums lost.
Right, but they're not spreading that money out. They're just looking for advertising. No, 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 that was just all for advertising.
If it were strictly advertising, I'd agree with you.
That's that's what they were asking for, was just for advertising.
They're they're adjusting that. Advertising does help them recover from their lost revenue as a result of COVID. They were closed. A lot of twenty twenty.
Yeah, they they don't make money.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, that's the question I asked. American Rescue Plan is what what the thing is called. And if if an organization makes the the argument that this is what we lost, then I'm with them all the way. You know, I don't have a problem with that at all. But if they're just adding people, like Lori says. They've really got to put together a solid argument as to we need extra people. And as far as buses and things like that, I guarantee you, as soon as those buses run out, they'll be here asking us to give them more buses. Because just that's just the way they are. But we are going to vote on each one of these, by the way. If these organizations have the votes, they get the money. If they don't.
I would appreciate.
If if you have a problem or if anyone.
I would appreciate that direction, frankly. How many of these have I done? Seventeen so far?
Counselor Atencio, we're only going to take it to the subrecipient agreement level if upon your direction to the mayor and the staff.
It's incumbent upon us to make to do our homework.
I I would really like your direction to say, we're going to, of all these proposals, we are going to fund only these.
Yeah, yeah.
And that that would be very helpful to the Law Department.
Just chipping, if I can, with respect to the tourism industry, when Congress wrote the act, they specifically said that the funds can be used to aid the tourism and travel industry. And I think those museums come into that category specifically as a tourist industry that's been affected by COVID, so.
I I thought the conversation with that group was that the individual museums were going they were going to split up the money to the individual museum museums, not, no, because we talked about it, because there was a problem with advertising for everybody. Yeah, I thought the conversation went to that we were going to.
I mean, their their proposal is is going to address how are they going to provide services to schoolkids and others who were impacted by COVID. That's not in there, but it will be in there. And second, how do they recover based on their lost revenue? But I think it has to be one grant. I I don't think you take two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and give five to one group and a hundred to another group. They have to, I think, act collectively and have one goal and one plan. Because the advertising is is going to be for all of them.
Counselor Graham.
My question is the previous money that was funded already, these people have already received the money, right? And there was, there's a lot of similar things that we're looking at now that was already given before. So since this is our first time around, how are we to decide? I mean, the three of you already gave five million dollars away to several nonprofits and a lot of similar things that were like this. And so my question.
We were questioning that all along as well. So I I guess I I guess what I'm getting at is that we have constituents coming at us saying, what what's going on? Why aren't you spending this on infrastructure? I mean, that's what every city has done. They haven't doled out little amounts to.
I haven't got a single question about ARPA.
I I also have constituents coming up to me who are saying, I really, like, I have this, I have this. I I also have constituents coming up to me who are saying, I really, like, I have this, I have this nonprofit or I, the rescue mission really needs these funds because COVID killed us because we were unable to operate and under such extreme circumstances under COVID, we need to recoup our recovery.
But didn't didn't these people get CARES money? Where where did all the CARES money go?
Well, it should be said, all that money that came wasn't enough to begin with, you know? The the need was so large that we got CARES money and then we got this other money, we got, and then the ARPA money. It still isn't enough. There are organizations out there that haven't even come to us that have been hurt. I mean, the businesses that we know of that got some help that are barely starting to recover and and you know, they're just barely coming back. So I don't have a problem with that. The need was so great that if we had another thirty five million, it might bring us to to zero, you know what I mean?
So I think both, I, oh, sorry, Counselor Flores, you haven't.
So the county spent their money on water. Their water needs for Colorado City and their and and their water needs for Avondale. That's what, that's what they said. They said it wasn't very sexy on their spending, but that's what they needed. They wouldn't have been able to do those things otherwise if they wouldn't have spent their money. So and.
Ms. Solano.
If I could turn your direction to the planned presentations on three twenty one. The second bullet down is the Public Department of Public Health and Environment and is asking for premium pay of ninety one thousand dollars. Our our health director, Randy Ebbets, will be, well, he, I'm waiting for you to tell me three seven or three twenty one. This is half of what the calculation was because the county through ARPA funds gave me the authority today to say, we already gave them the ninety one. Could you please match city the other ninety one?
So it wasn't all on water.
Resources, they matched the Karen share. I think you approved a hundred and fifty thousand and they matched a hundred and fifty thousand. You are correct. I think the majority of it did go to their county water issues. But there were a number in the recovery stages that went to the, you know, the immediate recovery versus, you know, that long term.
Well, the premium pay is just like we did our premium pay too to our employees, correct?
Their premium pay went to their staff, but this is to the Public Department of Public Health and Environment staff.
Okay.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, there's, you have to go, you have to go into this law and and what, why it was passed this way and why they're giving this money to the community. It wasn't, it wasn't to pick all of the money to go into infrastructure. It was really to use a balanced approach to help as many people as it can, including children and including nonprofits. And, you know, an example of, you know, I I, somebody brought up the Juneteenth as an example. They they have one huge function once a year, and and I know for the last fifteen years, they've given scholarships out because they've had that big event at Bessemer Park. They were shut down for two years. They couldn't raise any money through that, through their function. So to me, even though somebody might feel that that doesn't apply, the COVID definitely impacted that organization, which happens to just give all that money back to young people to pay their tuition. I think that's a perfect example of of somebody that deserves it. And there's others and there's others on there. So, you know, I don't mind using some of this money for infrastructure, but I think we need to use a balanced approach. So it 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 is spread out to as many people as possible. The the two, the two vehicles that we're going to buy or that they want to buy, the Boys and Girls Ranch, it isn't about the vehicles. It's about transporting children that are that have been locked up in their house and, you know, for a year and a half. It's really a question of mobility here to help people that were really impacted. In this case, it happens to be children. So I, you know, I I'm going to fight vigorously for a lot of these. There might be a couple that I question too. But there's nothing wrong in balancing this money out, that it was the original intent of Congress to do this. And that's my, you know, my opinion.
Counselor Atencio.
Yeah, I agree, Dennis, in that I I'm not going to apologize because we help nonprofits and and the people that actually need it in this town. We're one of the few cities in the country that spends this much money on nonprofits and organizations that help the neediest of us and the people that actually need it. I'm not going to apologize for that. No, I'm with you, Dennis, all the way. I'll fight for it with you.
Okay, so there's a couple of questions on the table. One of the questions is from Ms. Solano, who has asked us, are we okay moving the presentations for the last part of the tranche from March twenty first to March seventh? Which is next Monday's work session. It's not televised. It might be longer, but it'll be these ARPA presentations here today. So I'm just going to go down and maybe we can say yes or no.
Well, those aren't the end of it, right? There are a couple of organizations that have resubmitted. Resubmitted their applications.
These, these are the last of the community developed work that have been presented to the mayor that he has recommended to present to you. The others are still in 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 working order to come back to the mayor for presentation before they come to you.
The reason I ask is because I've been championing the request from the symphony who has been here for ninety three years and are on the, are on the brink of literally closing its doors. And they lost, if anybody lost anything, they lost a lot, not to mention I went back and told them, you've got to tell us what's the kind of work you do for the kids, because that's one of the recommendations. And they didn't in the first place. They just said, hey, we lost revenue and and stuff and that didn't qualify. But so I mean, this is a jewel that Pueblo has and they are literally at doors closing. And, you know, we got to include them, that's all there is to it.
I, Ms. Solano, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also think that there's going to be another tranche that that's another question on the table coming May. So that could be another, that could be an option for the symphony.
Yeah, this this last is round four on on March the twenty first or requesting March seventh. And that concludes the round four with the first trans and it empties the bucket. And then we'd have to wait for your direction on collecting and presenting to you additional requests such as the million dollars for revolving loan fund for small business. That will have to be out of the second tranche of funds that we are anticipating to receive mid-May. None of those have been brought to your presentation level yet.
Counselor Maistry.
You're talking about the small business loans that was at one point one two million dollars left on the table?
No, a new, a new funding source out of ARPA funds to establish a revolving loan fund. The request will be for a million dollars. That will be a partnership between our Southern Colorado Economic Development Division and the SBDC. So a new pot of funds, a new bucket of money that will be available for small business. That will be their proposal.
Okay.
So Counselor Winner, the, sorry, are we okay moving the ARPA presentations from the twenty first to March seventh? Counselor Flores said yes. Counselor Maistry? I'm a yes as well. Yes, yes. Okay, so we are okay then. Oh, oh, sorry, I forgot. Thank you for reminding us that you're there, Counselor.
No problem. Just one comment on the, I agree that infrastructure is super important. But let's not forget that the county's needs and the city's needs are different. The city serves more people. The county just has different needs. So that's why theirs went to infrastructure.
So the other, the other question on the table from Counselor Atencio and Counselor Graham are, when we put this to a vote, how would, Mr. Kogosik, how would you like us to recommend which organizations receive ARPA?
I think that should be a work session. You can't make a decision at the work session, but you can give direction to staff. You know, it's not just me, but it's mayor's office and the chief of staff that works on these. Just give direction. So we've with the early proposals came from PCC. We have funded PCC in the past. It qualifies. We we just need to know which of these you're you're going to fund and in what amount. And then I will do the subrecipient agreements. I had said earlier that I have done seventeen of them. That's incorrect. I've done twenty eight. And so they take time, but I'm happy to do it.
I I keep monopolizing this thing. Ms. Graham says that we had already done five million. I think it would be unfair to judge this group. And we didn't judge the first ones. So I I if she's a vote and I'm a vote, I think we agree that we went through the pillars on the first ones. We went through the vetting by the mayor's office on the first ones. We did it on the second ones. I don't think we should go and do something else different with this group than we did for the first group.
As I recall, we did the first group. We put a whole list together, brought them to you. And then people said, you know, hey, take this one off because we want to talk about it or we we want to modify it a little bit.
We didn't have anything.
Pardon me?
We didn't have it. We had nothing taken up.
I thought there was.
Presentation. We ended up with one presentation that didn't qualify at all. And that's Mr. Kogosik was saying, no, this doesn't qualify. Remember that was some, yeah, so then we were kind of confused. It's like, well, why did they come here if they didn't even qualify? And so.
I thought when it was considered, we had a list, a resolution about these ten organizations, however many there were. And I I think it was Counselor Aliff said he'd like to remove one from the list. I forgot now which one it was.
That's the one. It was, it was a lawyer.
It was that.
It was a lawyer, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Was it legal services? Okay.
No, no.
So, yeah.
No, no, it wasn't a lawyer.
Yeah, that's that's a way to do it. We give you a whole list and you guys say.
It was broad, it was broadband. It was that broadband thing. It wasn't, it wasn't an attorney.
No.
It was, it was the Southern Colorado Economic Development.
And it was for three million dollars. It was one percent of our 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 arbitrage. And the county, the reason it came to the to the city is the county had notified us that they'd been asked for one and a half percent and they were going to fund it. And so in order to make that timing work, we added it at the end of that one presentation. And you are correct, after we listened to it, I don't know what the county ended up doing with it, because all of you said, I'm not sure this qualifies. And Dan agreed with you.
Dan agreed.
Well, we didn't, we never brought that for formal action for the council.
That was the one that came off the list. Otherwise, otherwise, whatever the pillars.
No, there was one that was considered separately.
But anyway, so we're right back to where we started. So now now you kind of understand how we how we got there in the first place. And so we're right back to where we were before.
Well, we should use the same process that we used.
Just because you used it the first time doesn't necessarily.
Well, that's true, but, you know, but.
Well, you know.
Nobody's going to pull one out.
We just did. We looked at this, this list now. This is the list that we're going to be looking at.
You're not going to pull anything out of there.
Well, if we don't, we don't.
Nobody's going to do that.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is, and I would feel more comfortable standardizing it per the other votes as well, so before when it, when we awarded other ones. So it sounds like we're going to move up the ARPA presentations to March seventh. And then, once it comes, I'm sure on the next regular council meeting on the fourteenth, no, the twenty first, no.
If I, if I could, at the end of the evening on March seventh, the direction to staff and to the attorney to even begin preparing the subrecipient agreement, it came in a work session with your nod by this bulleted item to say, I I I I approve or yes, and then he went forward. If there wasn't enough no's off of the bulleted list in front of you, he wouldn't have started the subrecipient agreement. So you could actually do the first page tonight from two fourteen to two twenty two, if that's any advantage to moving it forward for you and or for our city attorney to start the development of the subrecipient agreement. And then all you would need to look at on Monday evening is the last of list. Unless you'd like to look at it holistically and then Monday evening, be prepared to give us direction. Either one of those.
Well, the process to me would be to vote on these based on different dates there. We had five, one date, we had like seven in the next, and now we're going to have whatever we have on the seventh. So there'll be three votes for each date or section, I guess, that we could make, even make the presentations. I think that's how it's, it was in the past. That's how we should follow going forward.
Ms. Solano.
So is the direction then for the city attorneys to start to prepare subrecipient agreements? Or are there those now on the two fourteen that you're certain you would just as soon give direction today not to support?
Well, we've got to try to figure out how we're going to bring it within budget too. We're over a hundred and eighty seven thousand.
Where are we going to take the other money from for that one hundred and eighty seven thousand that's over?
The hundred and thirty seven thousand that's over?
Yeah. One eighty six?
One eighty six.
One eighty six. Some of them won't spend all the money, I think. Or we can make it up out of the second tranche. Or we can make it up perhaps out of the lost revenue. Maybe, depending on what the program is. A hundred and eighty six thousand, I think we can deal with.
And it is a hundred and eighty six thousand plus salaries as we go forward for two years.
So it sounds.
I'm okay with the whole list.
It sounds like then we're okay with the list for Mr. Kogosik to start preparing those and then voting for them in sections per history and Mr. Counselor Flores' comment.
I'm sorry, voting for them in what, in sections?
In sections, that's individually, that's how it's been, I guess, in the past.
We have three different dates.
Okay, so, okay, first, one resolution that has all the two fourteen dates, one resolution that has the two twenty two dates and those agreements. And then if anybody wants to pull one off at the meeting to talk about it or have a separate vote on it, that's perfectly appropriate, I think. Okay, all right, we can do that. Yep.
Does that work for you?
Okay. When do you want me to start preparing?
Agreements. And I thought it was the fourteenth of March meeting that we would be voting on all three.
Okay, that that's fine with me.
Okay.
I won't be here that night. Laura takes good notes.
Ms. Solano, was was that all the direction that was needed?
Well, you can't because you just launched them all.
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair. One additional direction, please, for the for the mayor, Dan and I. And that is the lost revenue. Our accounting office and our attorney's office knows that you budgeted and appropriated the full eighteen million dollars when we received it last June. But to cover the cost of these governmental services, would you like to see a resolution for all of them in one for the list you seized it so far? Or do you want a resolution per item? How would you like to? Yeah, how would you like that? So we can document it and have an audit trail and that they were presented to city council. Through resolution and all one or individual?
Yeah, I would think all one, sure.
All right.
Do you, so there's still three, about three point three million that's unappropriated. Do you have an idea or does staff and I have an idea of how that's going to?
We have a long list. The mayor's direction is to let's see what, you know, what this first six looks like and we'll come back with priority list.
Two point three then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if I, if I were to do something else, I know that in the retreat, Andrew talked about the sprayers as the, as like a need of public work. So I'd like, I'd like to propose that as a potential spend down item.
We sprayers?
Yeah. And I also, Counselor Atencio is the big fan of the the half pipe at El Centro. I'd like to propose that as well.
Oh, well, and I'd like to propose the park in my neighborhood over on Goldridge Boulevard.
Oh, and I'd like to propose the park in my neighborhood over at Eagle Ridge Boulevard. They, we've had that, we've owned that land for ten years and we still haven't developed a park there on Eagle Ridge Boulevard. So I would like to propose that for my name, for my uh district. I'd love to have a dog park up there or something. We're gonna do that.
Those were just ideas.
Yeah, and it belongs to our park and recreation department. They don't have a park up there. They'd love to have that park developed. The land was given to us ten years ago. Should probably maybe think about developing it. We don't have anything like that on the north side.
With the mayor's direction, that is why we brought what we knew as a priority and the department directors, they have a lengthy list that they still wanna present. Um he just, he did, he just gave the direction for these right now. And um and we do have the two years and he also didn't wanna, you know, spend the whole bucket. Um but let's get these purchases done and in place that'll impact government services and and we'll be back.
Totally. I understand. We're gonna do what it sounds like all in one resolution um for for this city revenue.
Make it clear that we're we're trying to move quickly cuz we know what the time deadlines are, but we wanna be thoughtful as well. And we wanna take some time, especially as we look at the development here. Uh in some parts of the city where we might have to use some of these funds to beef up that infrastructure that we talked about earlier. So that's just important. So we have three million dollars that's unappropriated, but by the time we have a meeting with the people that can tell us. What it's gonna cost to upsize the sewer systems there for this development to take place, we might be looking for three million more.
Well, we have the tranche, the second tranche. We, it doesn't have to come out of our revenue of the, I mean, what we recouped. It could come out of the second tranche, right? Yep, mm-hmm, cuz we've got that and quite a bit on sewer. And you know, at the same time, I realize that we've been impacted by the covid. There are people that can't even come up here and ask for money. They can't even go to those organizations and get money. Because they just happen to make a little bit too much money, but still they've lost quite a bit of money and income. Their children have not been able to go to school. We have a middle class out there that has suffered just as well. They're not entitled to all these programs, but they will pay the taxes. They will be the ones that have to pay the taxes when we have to upgrade our infrastructure here in the city. So this is the people's money. The people's money. We don't always have the privilege of spending the people's money on something other than their city. And their, what it takes to run their city. That's what the taxes are paid for. So I just would like for people to keep that in mind when they're voting for things. We are in charge of the taxpayers of this community's money. And if they sometimes, if they wanna donate to causes and so forth, they write a check out of their checking account. It's not always our right. We're one of the very few cities, like you said, in the country that gives to five oh one C threes. One of the very few cities and we pay to a lot of five oh one C threes, but this money. All of the money that comes to this city belongs to the people of this city and we have to run this city. We have to keep up at the infrastructure. We have to keep our police department, our fire department, everything going. And we can't always impose just higher taxes on the citizens to keep it going. We have to take opportunities like this and put it back into the infrastructure needs.
Councillor Flores.
I have to defend the nonprofits, uh you know, and and I can because. We have uh the animal shelter. We have the Pueblo Zoo. Those are two nonprofit organizations. These are functions that the city should be doing. Uh we we elect to subcontract those agreements out because they do such a better job. Uh they used, uh at one time we ran the animal shelter. Almost sixty percent of all the animals that went to the animal shelter were euthanized. We now only have ten percent. I mean, it's just a transformation. The Pueblo Zoo is is a gem. It's an accredited zoo. It never was when I was a kid. Was it was, it was awful to see the bears and the bear pits and all this stuff. So but but the 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 social problems that nonprofits solve in this community are immense. I mean, uh they they pick up a lot of stuff that government would normally do, but in this community. That's, you know, we choose to uh, you know, to help nonprofits and their budget. You know, for the amount that we give them as a city is is small and they go out and they're able to get additional funds. So. Uh and no one knows better than me our fiduciary duty that we, this, I think, everybody knows on this council. Uh that we wouldn't be here if we didn't understand that this was taxpayer dollars, that they entrusted us and that's why they elected us. And no one knows that lesson better than I do. And uh so I I, you know, I I I just don't understand. That I need to be given a lesson, you know.
You don't need to be given a lesson and I understand your ties. I mean, they were your clients. You have a lot of nonprofits that were your clients when you were in the insurance business for years. So I can, I understand that.
Okay, we're getting off track.
Um, I say something?
Uh huh.
Um, well, to also defend nonprofits that I worked with, worked for. Didn't make necessarily money from. Um let's not forget that nonprofits exist because. It would cost the government twice as much to do that job and that's to Dennis's point.
Okay, I think that uh Ms. Solano, or there, is there any more direction that you needed from council tonight? Okay, um then we will reconvene Monday where we hear all of the other ARPA presentations. It is seven twenty-seven and I conclude this meeting.